We have a roll call, please.
Ms. Christensen?
Here.
Mr. Gingona?
Here.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Present.
Mr. Canepa.
I am here. Well, we do have one presentation. I see a lot of old friends, new friends, and homeowners. Can I ask Marion Mann to step to the dais? It's the 16th Annual Daily City Holiday Decorations Contest Awards. Marion?
This is the 16th Annual, and I have a froggy waist, so you have to forgive me. We have also joined with Broadmoor, so you will be providing Broadmoor with both Village, Garden Village, and Broadmoor's presentation. We also have Republic Services, which was Allied Waste, but they have become Republic Service. And I'd like to have Carl Minnie to come up to help David, Mayor, I'm sorry, he's a kid, give out the awards. And I would like to thank everyone that was so great in helping.
We have the Fernando Govera family from the Crocker Neighborhood Association. Okay, we'll make sure that we get that to them. We have Navarro Prado family. Congratulations.
That is the Cypress Point Homeowners Association.
Franciscan Mobile Homeowners Association, Bob Quinn. Bob? Hillside Homeowners Improvement Association, the Castaneda family. Are they here? John Daly, Westlake Residence, the Toto family, George Toto. George?
Congratulations, man. Congratulations. 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 Hey, Mrs. Toto, how are you? Good to see you.
I promise I didn't do that.[287.02][287.02](laughter) I swear.
(laughter)
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
(inaudible)
I feel so wonderful.
This is my most fun council meeting.
You guys ready for Christmas, right?
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
I live about two blocks away on San Diego.
Just so you know, a lot of the pictures are located behind us, one on the left and one on the right. So, the Settleback Homeowners Association, Esther Madrano. Esther?
Okay, the St. Francis Heights Homeowners Association, Mr. and Mrs. Guillory. Okay. Ceramone Homeowners Association, Peter Everisto. Peter? Mrs. Everisto?
(inaudible)
(applause)
Congratulations.
All right, Peter?
(inaudible)
I know this house.
Congratulations.
One, two, three. One, two, three. One more.
A lot of cameras on there.
Where's Joseph?
One, two, three.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Southern Hills Homeowners Association, the Alcarzars family.
Alcarzars. God, I went to high school with them. Raul.
Sorry, man. I was thinking of your rearing jacket.
All right, good job. Good job. All right, good job.
(inaudible)
Oh, you should probably work your way to the front.
Westlake Midolls Homeowners Association, Marcelo family. Are you here? I see the Marcelo family.
Congratulations.
Don't cover her face.
Navarro family, Revilla Court residents. Navarro family?
How many clocks is out on your wall now?
Five?
Got new names?
Twelve of four minutes.
First time, Broadmoor. Congratulations. Rasmussen Myers. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Great job. Great job.
Thank you.
Don't be bashful.
(inaudible)
One, two, three.
One, two, three. Ready?
Welcome, Broadmoor.
Yeah, welcome to Broad.
Good job, man. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job, Marie.
Sure.
(laughter)
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
(applause)
And I will take those.
I would just like to say that when I said earlier, this is my most fun meeting of the year. Oh, my.
There we go. Most fun meeting of the year because we get to see all of our neighbors and we get to see the beautiful work that they've done. For a number of years, I drive around my neighborhood. I'm from original Daily City, and we have a whole gang of people, of previous winners, that drive around the whole neighborhood. And then we celebrate and kind of argue over who has the best house. But there are so many wonderful ones, and what I would recommend to all of you here and at home, next year, when it's close to Christmas time, take your family on an evening drive and really just go up and down the streets. You will be amazed at all the incredible effort that people have put in and how beautiful it is those first few days before Christmas. So, congratulations to all of you.
Thank you.
Five, Revilla Court. Let me just say this. I want to echo the comments of Councilman Christensen. You know, on the east side of town, where I'm driving around, I always start in Revilla Court. I always start in Revilla Court. I want to give you a special round of applause because you've always, every year, you've done so much and so good over there. But I have to tell you, you know, it's starting early. Is it my imagination? Raise your hand, people that have won these awards. Did you start before Thanksgiving? Raise your hand if it was before Thanksgiving. I'll tell the truth, because in my neighborhood, it was already well lit. Okay, and do you take them down? Okay, raise your hand if you take them down on January 2nd. Okay, so that's it. So, it would be truthful to say that you put it up after Thanksgiving and take them down on January 2nd. But I want to thank you guys for making Daily City look so great. Make us proud. Thank you so much.
Well, you know, we're going to get into our, you know, the other part of the meeting. You're free to stay, or you could go if you want now. But on behalf of the city of Daily City, thank you for all you do. We appreciate it. Just to echo the comments of both my colleagues, it's a pleasure to see all of you, and we appreciate the joy you bring to people during the Christmas season and holiday season. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
(applause)
I come back to you.
Yes. Nice to see you again.
Thank you, brother. I know it's not, man. I know. Which makes it up.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
I have a motion to approve the minutes. So move. I have a second.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? So move.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda in its totality? I'll make the motion. Can I have a second?
Second?
All those in favor? Aye. Colleagues, that brings us up to Communications, Item 5, Use Permit UPR 9-1511523, City Toyota Vehicle Storage at 3301 Juniper Sarah Boulevard, Mr. Van Lachehousen, Mrs. Motherhead. Good evening.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. This is a request by City Toyota for a temporary car sale storage area proposed on Juniper Sarah Boulevard. I will go through the proposal briefly. The subject site is bounded essentially by D Street, Juniper Sarah Boulevard, B Street, Hill Street, and the areas identified in yellow. So, this would be just south of the existing City Toyota car dealership across B Street. This is the site of the Sarah Bowl, which was closed in 2012.
Which they already have tons of cars parked there.
That's right. It's actually, the use has been implemented. That's correct. This is a site photo before there were cars there, showing the, there's existing parking stalls that were associated with the bowling alley, and essentially, City Toyota is requesting permission to use those for the temporary storage lot. This photo provides some context. This is the existing City Toyota car dealership located across B Street. This is B Street here. This is SFPUC RightofWay, indicated where the arrow is, and that would not be part of the proposal. So, there would be no car storage in those areas. Across the street is the Samtrans Park and Ride Lot. This is looking to the southwest from the intersection of D and Hill Streets. So, the proposal is for a total of 208 parking spaces, essentially in three areas on the project site. The areas are 171 spaces in this yellow area. This is Juniper Sarah Boulevard here and D Street here. Areas, Area C is one of the areas in the green, right at the intersection of Hill and D, and then another smaller area, Area B. Combined A and B, or, excuse me, B and C would provide 37 spaces, and Area A would be the largest, 171 spaces. For some context, the orange area is the previous Sarah Bowl, bowling alley site. The SFPUC area, shown in the gray, would not be proposed, or there would be no car storage there. And there's a condition of approval that reflects that.
A question, back to that picture. It shows the parking spots on B Street, right? The parallel parking spots are included as well.
That's correct, and thank you for pointing that out.
And that's on the east side of the street. What about the west side of the street on B Street?
They would just be on, well, the parking spaces on B Street would be located here where they're indicated. And this area is fenced off.
And so that's still a public thoroughfare or not?
It's actually private property.
Oh.
Yes.
And they just let us drive on it all these years?
All these years, right. They're, yes, essentially, it's private property.
Yeah, okay.
And it's fenced off as such. So, what looks to be a public street actually is not. So, the city staff, in reviewing the BART stationary specific plans, determined that a use permit is required for this use, and that's why it's before the City Council for approval. We've determined that a five-year duration would be an appropriate time period for the user to potentially identify a permanent type of a solution for vehicle storage. The ultimate use of this site is not a vehicle storage yard, at least at this point, and should that change in the future, perhaps a general plan amendment may be warranted. We'd essentially would revisit this proposal after a five-year period. Conditions of approval don't allow any use of the city streets. Again, B Street is not a city street. No use of the SFPUC property would be allowed. There would be no automotive repair. Of course, that's taken care of inside the City Toyota dealership building itself. And then any security lighting that would be installed would need to be reviewed by the Planning Division to ensure that there was no implications to motorists on the adjacent streets, especially getting off the freeway. So, those are the conditions of approval we've recommended. Project is exempt from CEQA, California Roman Quality Act. The planning commissions reviewed the proposal and recommended that the City Council approve the use permit, subject to the findings and conditions of approval contained in the staff report. The staff, as well as representatives from City Toyota, are here tonight to answer any questions council members may have.
Wonderful. Are there any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Are there, in the existing space where there are vehicles parked, are there charging stations for the vehicles there that Toyota uses?
Not to our knowledge. These are not necessarily electric-type vehicles.
Right.
The City Toyota people probably answer that question the best. I'm sure they have charging stations inside the dealership.
So, let me ask representatives from City Toyota to answer that question. Do you mind coming to the dais?
Hi, I'm Dave Paul from City Toyota.
The question was...
Do you have charging stations there at that parking lot now?
We have them on our main facility, but there is no power on that lot at all.
Okay. So, all the cars that you need to charge just go through your facility?
Correct. Stay in our main facility, yeah.
Okay.
Wonderful. Thank you.
All right.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, can I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
So move.
Second.
A roll call, please, Ms. Oppona.
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Gingona?
Yes.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Canepa?
Aye. The motion is adopted, and good luck.
Thank you.
Sell lots of cars. We need the sales tax.
Item number six is a finding of public convenience and necessity, PCN 11-1511834, to sell alcoholic beverages for off-site consumption at the Flyers service station at 501 Ceramone Boulevard. Mr. Van Lachehousen, good evening.
Yes, so similar to previous requests that have come before the City Council, this is an item for the City Council to consider, a finding of public convenience and necessity. These types of findings are referred to the city by the Department of Alcohol and Beverage Control for areas that are identified as over-concentrated and/or high-crime areas. In the particular instance at 501 Ceramone Boulevard, which is the Flyers service station, for those of you who are unfamiliar with that, it's right next to the McDonald's and the Big Five, right there at Ceramone and Geller. The area that that is in is over-concentrated with Type 21 licenses. And Type 21 licenses are licenses where the applicant is allowed to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits. The current over-concentration in that area is three facilities, Type 21 licenses, and this would, if approved and allowed to go forward, would make the over-concentration for licenses. The area is indicated in the staff report. There are several findings, or not findings, but pieces of information. This is not a high-crime area, but there are some crime statistics provided for the council's information. So, the city staff has no recommendation on these sorts of items. It's purely the council's will in granting them. And of course, if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer those. This proposal is somewhat in conjunction with a proposal that'll be coming forward in the next couple of months to actually remodel the service station. Currently, there is a, I believe, a small convenience facility and auto repair located at the service station that would be completely converted, as well as a small addition proposed to allow for an approximately 2,000-square-foot convenience market-only type facility. So, there's an improvement that's associated with this proposal in that regard. If there's any questions, of course, we'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions? Yes, Mr. Gingona?
Type 21. Why is it a Type 21 and not Type 20?
The applicant's here and can answer that question the best.
Do we have anyone from Flyers? Sir, please come up and state your name.
Good evening. My name is Mitch Garber with Flyers Energy.
How you doing, Mitch?
Doing great, thank you.
I have a quick question for you now. I see that you've applied for a Type 21, and the difference between a 20 and a 21 is that you're going to be requesting to sell distilled spirits, like half pints and pints of liquor. Is that correct?
Yes, we would be able to sell that. We're looking at a very small footprint, though, because the sales, you know, sales of distilled and liquor is usually a very small part of our business, so it won't contribute a lot of space.
Would it be okay if you then just withdrew, if it's such a small part? You know, the idea of being able to buy distilled liquor at a gas station, I don't think there's any gas stations I know around here that have Type 21. So, is that something that you'd be amenable to?
We looked for a Type 20 license that was available in the market area. Weren't able to find one. This was the only one that was available. Majority of our stores do have a Type 20.
Yeah, and so, would you voluntarily agree not to sell distilled spirits?
Yes.
That's something that I would like to, because the idea of being able to buy distilled spirits at a gas station is just something I've never, and I understand now why you had to go for 21.
Right, it was the only thing available.
So, that was my concern.
Sure.
So, is it possible for us to put that language in some sort of approval or something?
The issue is that the application is mandated by state law.
Right.
So, you can put it in as part of your finding of convenience, but it would be not necessarily enforceable for the purposes of the Type 21 license.
Right, he would have the license, but we would have a condition of...
Condition, use permit.
Some sort of approval of something?
Well, this isn't really a use permit, so technically, we don't have the enforcement on this. This is for a finding of convenience. He would voluntarily do it, but we wouldn't have enforcement on the license. We wouldn't be able to revoke the license.
No. Can we enforce any other way?
It's state law. So, the only way you would enforce it is if this was actually a use permit-type process or...
Well, I think it's fair to say, if you'll be coming to us with a rebuild of your facility, it could certainly be added then, correct? it could certainly be added then, correct?
They will be coming forward with a use permit application, but the use permit is specific to the expansion of the convenience store.
Which would be where the store is, right?
Right.
Right, which is where the liquor would be sold. Okay. Yeah, I'm very concerned about cars and hard liquor. You can get real drunk and real dangerous real fast. So that would be my concern as well, that we not sell distilled spirits.
And we'd be willing to agree with that.
Yeah, and you said it was such a small part of your business.
It is.
I mean, most of your people are going to be, probably mostly beer, I would assume.
Yeah, and, you know, even with few exceptions, beer is, it's an important part of our business because it adds to related sales and convenience.
Right.
But it's not a large part of the business. It's more of a convenience.
So, Mr. Garber, oh, thank you very much. I think you heard loud and clear where the council is relative to that. So with that, can I get a motion, please?
Yeah, I'll make a, yeah, I made a motion of finding of convenience and necessity, notwithstanding the fact that there were no Type 20s for the gas, so yes.
Have a second. I'll make the second. Have a roll call, please.
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Gangona?
Yes.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Mr. Canepa?
Aye, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Yes, bye-bye.
Colleagues, we're going to just adjust here real quick. There was someone who we want to recognize for the holiday contest.
Oh, all right.
They came a little bit late, but if you'd indulge me, I'd like to present them their award. Marion, what neighborhood is this? What neighborhood is this?
St. Francis.
St. Francis.
Oh, great.
Congratulations.
So we'll do this, for the picture.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Good job. Can we look at the parking?
Congratulations, we saw your home up on the slides.
Item number seven, second reading ordinance number 1404, amending zoning ordinance, rezoning site on Bryant Street. Ms. Zimmerman.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Canepa. This is the second reading of ordinance 1404, amending the existing zoning ordinance and rezoning the site from retail to office-commercial. This is for adoption.
Great, can I get a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Gangona?
Aye.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Mr. Canepa?
Aye. That was adopted. Item number eight, second reading of the ordinance number 1405, amending Chapter 17.47 regarding affordable housing. Ms. Zimmerman, again.
Mr. Canepa, this is an ordinance adoption, ordinance number 1405, according to the City Council. At the last regular scheduled meeting, we need to order.
A motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Gangona?
Aye.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Mr. Canepa?
Aye, thank you very much. The ordinance was adopted. We have two speakers' cars for public appearances, oral communications. May I ask Rodney Miller to come up and educate us on the American Cancer Society?
Good evening. I just wanted to tell you all that our Relay for Life is scheduled for June 4th and 5th. Please put it on your calendar, as last year, we would appreciate a few words from each of you. And of course, I'll speak to Sal, and hopefully, he'll be able to attend also. And for the community to know that, again, it's June 4th and 5th at Westmore High School. And we'll look forward to everybody being there. And be sure that I will be reminding you and retelling you over and over again that we're there to raise money. We were very happy that we did gift wrapping in Ceramone this year, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, and raised a little over $2,500 from gift wrapping. So we were very excited about that, and thank the community for allowing us to do that and raising that money. So we'll look forward to seeing you all on June 4th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to thank you and Jonah for just your years of service and what you've done at Westmore. It really is a shining example to many people, and I've been participating in that event for many, many years, and it really shines a light. So congratulations to you and the volunteers.
I'll walk with you anytime.
Thank you, I appreciate that, Jonah. We do have our garbage guy, Carl Menne, from Republic Services.
Oh, the new container, yay!
Tonight, I'm the compost guy, not the garbage guy. So I just wanted to show you the new kitchen food scrap pails that will start hitting the streets next Monday. It'll be a two-week delivery process. Each resident will receive one of these at their doorstep. And what they're to use this for is it helps them collect all their food scraps inside their home. They can collect them there, and then they will use this pail to dump that food scrap into their current grain container. It's historically been a yard waste container, but now it is just our composting container. So this is an important part of the new program. We're excited to roll this out, and so, again, be on the lookout for your new kitchen pail. And one other item, we have two community meetings where we're going to discuss the smaller details on our services. We've got one January 21st, from 7:00 to 8:00, and that will be right here in the council chambers. And then, the next one is Tuesday, January 26th, from 7:00 to 8:00. And that's at the Albert Taglia Community Center. Thanks.
Are we limited to just one of those? It looks small to me.
I don't know how much you want to collect with inside your home, so if you need, if it's an absolute necessity, give us a call, and we'll work something out, and we'll get a second one delivered.
I want to thank you, Carl, and I want to thank Monica. Thank you for what you guys continue to do, keep rolling that out.
And the pictures on the front tell us what we can put in there, right? So no words necessary.
Right, so we've got a couple different languages on the insert that will come inside the pail, but yes, we've gone a lot more visual to help people understand what we're aiming for.
I've been an avid composter for, I don't know, at least 30 years. And you don't want a container bigger than that because you're going to get stuff in it. So you need to dump every couple of days. And a good, quick swish wouldn't hurt either.
Right. Yeah, it will start composting in here if you get too much. Thank you, and good evening.
Your grain.
The green one.
Are there any appointments for boards, commissions? Seeing none, let's move on to item nine, council committee report. Are there any council committee reports, Ms. Christensen?
We haven't had any committees.
Okay, wonderful. Item number 10, city council reports. Are there any city council reports, Ms. Christensen?
No.
Nope.
I got one.
Good, Ms. Gangona.
So along the same lines as what I did when we went, when I did that training up in, for the weapons, mass, drugs, and training, radiological training for the state military reserve, just this last weekend, I was able to connect the dots. And that is, I was able to invite a Daly City North County Fire Battalion Chief and two SWAT members from Daly City Police to come to another course. A course that was put on by FEMA, and it was a course that was put on and sponsored by my unit, the California State Military Reserve, the Second Special Battalion, Regional Support Command North. So this is what we did. We went and did eight hours training on homemade explosive awareness, recognition, and response. Now, to be clear, they didn't teach us how to cut wires and detonate bombs. What they did teach us to do, though, and there was a room full of first responders, 62 people, they did teach us to do is recognition of homemade weapons. We found out what kinds of, you know, we did case studies on Timothy McVeigh and the bombings of the use of fertilizer and acetone and peroxide, and some certain things you got to remember, like if someone like me goes into a beauty supply store and orders a bunch of hair, peroxide products, it should raise a red flag. Because peroxide is just something that you can use in homemade explosives for, and I really would have no use for it. Acetone, things like that, and other things. So what we did was, this eight-hour course made everybody in that room eligible for two more courses. Two more free courses that FEMA was going to be putting on. This just goes along with the whole, you know, being prepared for the next, you know, whatever's going to happen. One of the courses, it's a 32-hour course, four-day course, that now our first responders, our SWAT members, our Office of Emergency Services in San Mateo County are going to be eligible to go to. One is Incident Response to Terrorist Bombings, which is a four-hour, or which is a four-day course in New Mexico Tech. That is a flight to New Mexico, all expenses paid by the federal government, and a cycle. And this kind of free training could go very far for us in our county to make us more safe. The second was Prevention of and Response to Suicide Bombing Incidents. So whether or not those are going to happen, it's always good to know that we can get this kind of training. Now that the officers on our force have gotten that training, they are also eligible to be trainers. So they can train this course, teach this course to our people, and then they'll all be eligible for that, for that training. So it was a great weekend, a lot of stuff that was really interesting. If I had time, I'd tell you more about it, but what's more important is that we now have some people on our own staff that are going to benefit from this training, that can also make the county better, because of the fact that the battalion chief that took the training is on the Office of Emergency Services. So happy about that. Secondly, another one, we have, on February 6th, we have coming into town the winner of the X Factor Australia. Her name is Marlissa Plisalain. And she's going to be here for a couple reasons, but the main reason she's going to be here is there's going to be a benefit on February 6th, write this down, it's a benefit football game. It's the Wounded Warriors Amputees versus the San Francisco NFL alumni. So Snoop Dogg will be leading the other team against the Wounded Warriors Amputees. He does this every year. They're going to, it's going to be on Saturday, February 6th, noon to 3:00. Saturday, February 6th, noon to 3:00, at the College of San Mateo. The cost is $10 for adults, but I have, for students, I've got a few tickets. If anybody wants tickets, we can pass them out for free to students, wanting as many people out there as possible. Hopefully, they'll raise a lot of money for our veterans and our wounded. So I'm looking forward to seeing you there on February 6th, because I'll be there.
And isn't the young woman singing?
Marlissa Plisalain is coming from Australia. She is a 14-year-old Filipino Australian that won the X Factor. So it's going to be fun.
All right, do you have any more city council reports? Seeing none, item 11, staff reports. Okay, this does bring us to the, thank you, Ms. Martel, this does bring us to the adjourned memories. Ms. Christensen?
I'd like to adjourn in memory of Beatrice Jackson. If you were blessed to know Bee, you know that her smile would literally light up the day of each and every person she met. She served as a Daly City Planning Commissioner many years ago. She was a board member on the Hillside Homeowners Group Forever, volunteered with the San Mateo Health and Welfare Advisory Board, and she was a longtime employee of the San Mateo County Juvenile Hall. Bee, her family talks about her, and when they talk about her, they say, Bee had three real loves in life. She loved the Lord, she loved her family, and she loved basketball. And when, if any of you knew her, she literally walks into a room and has the most beautiful and wonderful smile. I can see her having tea with those who've passed on and sharing some words of wisdom and flashing that smile. Bee will be long-loved and forever remembered, and we send our deepest sympathies to her family and friends. Bee Jackson, a wonderful woman.
Great.
I also knew Bee, Bee Jackson. I, you know, being in Daly City as long as I have, you couldn't help but go to school with or play against one of her kids at Jefferson High School. So Bee Jackson knew a lot of people. I actually tried one of my first misdemeanor trials against Terry Jackson, is her daughter, who is a Superior Court Judge, and we got a chance to see her at the memorial. And Bee will be missed because Bee was a, as Judith said, tireless, and you know how some people can, well, the opposite, sucking life out of a room? When she walked into a room, you really knew that she was there, and it wasn't because she was loud. Bee will be missed because Bee, I remember the days when we would ask volunteers, and we didn't have to ask Bee, she stepped forward willingly. And, yeah, she will definitely be missed.
Wonderful. I do have several adjourned memories. I do want to adjourn in memory of Sandra Obuata. Sandra died at the age of 32. She died of cardiac arrest. Previous to that, her father, Spiro, died six months earlier, and her mother died about three years ago. Praying for her sister, who's the lone surviving family member, Nadia. But Sandra had an ever-present smile, was extraordinarily family-oriented, solid, solid person. She'll definitely be missed. I also want to adjourn in memory of Stuart Hoppen. And then finally, I want to adjourn in memory of Edward David Lager Marcino. That's Kathy Lager Marcino's father-in-law. Ed had a long and distinguished career in San Mateo County. He died at 86 years old and will be missed. With that, can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, this meeting is adjourned. We do have several items of business to work through.